Remembers how we do this.
The gavel.
Okay, yep.
You got the...
I do have the agenda, so...
Yep.
Let's start it all. Okay. Announcement has been made. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-Et Sec of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please make the roll call?
Mr. Perelik.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Vivate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Here.
Okay. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. On the agenda for the planning board is the Courtesy Review for Application 20:517. Parsonie Troy Hills, Knoll, on Knoll Lane Block 494, Lot 1.
Good evening. I'm Joe Beckmeyer, Superintendent of the Sewer Utility. The township of Parsonie Troy Hills, through its sewer utility, is undertaking an improvement project to improve the sewer system in the Knoll Recreation Area. If you know, I'm sure you all know the Knoll Recreation Area, but it's basically bisected by the Aqueduct, the Jersey City Aqueduct. There are six sewage pump stations on the northern side of, you know, north of the Aqueduct, and we're in the process, we're going to eliminate five of them. The five existing pump stations that we eliminate be the East, the West, the Maintenance Barn, the one at Lenape Park, and the Amphitheater. They were all installed about 1991, which is almost 30 years old, and probably should have been replaced sometime in the past. What we're doing is going to combine those and put into one existing pump station. The existing pump stations have no standby backup, no generators for backup power, so when there's a power failure, they go down. The existing force main from the Knoll West, which is up on top of the hill, goes down under the golf driving range. We're going to wind up taking all of the sewage by gravity pipes from those five locations and take it to a new pump station, which should be located about 25, 30 feet from the parking lot for the Lenape area along Knoll Drive. Now, certain maps, I see Knoll Lane, Knoll Drive, but it's the one where you're going from the east ground, that's right there. There's a little area where forestry maintains a stockpile of earth and so on, we'll be right in that area. Let's see. Pump station, gravity, also then the pump station will go, the force main, the discharge from that pump station will go from that new pump station up under Knoll Drive, under the Jersey City Aqueduct to an existing sleeve, and discharge through a new manhole on the gravity sewer in front of the community center. The pump station, right now, we have the situation where the amphitheater and Lenape are used for summer maintenance camp, summer camp, and it gets difficult for us to bring large trucks in and our men into maintain those during the summer days. You know, we're working during the summer, there during the summer, so we're trying to eliminate that conflict. We'll move everything away from there. You know, we'd hate to have a situation where, you know, you rent out the Knoll West for a big affair, you plan a big Saturday night affair for $40,000, and all of a sudden the health office has to come and say, "We've got to shut you down because the toilets aren't going to work and the kitchen can't produce any food." Just eliminate that, because if we have issues, rather than us trying to work right in that area and get things done, we'll be in a remote area away from all of the activities. Well, the only thing that'll be above grade, it'll be a one-story veneer brick building, maybe about 16 by 13 and planned, about 200 square feet in area. And one of the things we're also doing is the contractor is required to hire a licensed arborist to follow the route of where the pipe will be in the pump station, to look at the trees, find out which ones we can save, remove, or replace. We have money in our budget for the removal of trees that are in the way, and also to plant new trees in. Now, again, as you look at it, I was at the site where the pump station is going to be, there's two good trees and then there's a dead tree in the middle. So, we'll be, in effect, helping the township by taking out some of the dead trees that are in the area. Also what we're doing is, the contractor will have prescriptions, months and locations where the construction activity can work, working with the Recreation Department and Forestry, so basically we will only start work on the site after October 1st, and then we have to end by the end of April. So we don't want to interfere with the renting of the summer camp and then also renting of the park areas and so on. It's going to make it a little difficult, but it's something we think is necessary, and that's why we're anxious to get before the board, so we can get started and go to bed as soon as possible. Also, it's a Greenacre area, and through the Township Attorney, they've already presented that to the representative from Greenacres, and they said this is an enhancement for the recreational area, it's not in, let's see, not a diversion from the Knoll process. And that's about where it is. Any questions?
Susan, would you like to start?
Sure. It's been a while since we've had a consistency review, but if you recall, the main point...
Courtesy.
Courtesy, I'm sorry. Yes, Courtesy Review, thank you. The main role of the planning board is to look at consistency with the master plan. So we did flag the two goals that we think were relevant here. The first is Goal 7, which deals with protection of environmental resources, and we thought that there weren't any issues with this application. I think Joe has just given testimony that certainly New Jersey DEP didn't have an issue, Greenacres program is actually likely to enhance the environmental aspects around the Knoll. And then the second goal deals with utilities and ensuring that there's adequate, you know, adequate maintenance and repair and capacity of the utilities. So this is obviously a utility project intended to further those goals. So we felt that it was consistent with the two relevant goals of the master plan. The only comments we had had, which I think Joe's probably already, because he's seen the memo, he's already addressed a lot of this, just giving a sense of the overall project and what it means for the sewer utility, we asked about trees, and I think you've spoken to that with the arborist. The last comment we had was whether, whether there's any green, green infrastructure, green infrastructure principles used in this project, just curious if you're able to do that.
One of the issues here, I have enough trouble hearing...
Yeah, sorry, is this better?
I've got my mask on, I've got my hearing aids in, but that doesn't...
I know. And I'm hearing an echo in my, with my own mask. Green infrastructure, is there any opportunity to use green infrastructure principles? Sustainability?
The, I don't know what we're talking about, green infrastructure in this case. When you put a sewer pipe in the ground, it goes underground. We will replant the trees, replant any grasses in the area and so on. The area where the main pipe will be, we, along the, I guess, eastern side of the driving range outside the fence, and that's basically an area that's, like, where I was at earlier last week, was a little weak. So in effect, hopefully we're going to enhance it by reseeding it and so on as we go through. As far as green, well, one of the things is that we're, the Knoll, which is on top of the hill, currently pumps down from the top of the hill down, so we're going to run by gravity to the bottom of the hill, and then we pump up from there. But again, the main reason is that the ease of maintenance and because of the ages, everything's going to have to be replaced soon anyhow, I try to be a little bit ahead of it currently, so, like I said, you don't have the affair there and we've got to shut you down because you can't use the facility. Try, my thing is with the sewer system should be that you're not inconvenienced, it's there for use all the time when you need it, not that all of a sudden it's only an emergency and we make the headlines that we, there was a spill and overflow went out to the river and so on. So I think in a way by us improving, in fact, last year I get a call from the mayor on a Saturday, there was an affair going on at the Lenape area. Well, it was a pump failure in the pump station, and the sewage was running down the path in between where the, into the parking lot with the children and the guests and so on. So, you know, a lot of times people say, "What do you do, you're going to run a grease for the trickle plant?" Well, actually, we're, I think, we're the first environmentalists, because if we can't handle the sewage and it's going out the river or the creek and so on, there's a green problem right there.
Right, right.
So, I think we're, the basic, you know, solution or to address the green thing, again, we don't have any windmills, we don't have any solar panels on, look at this building, it's not that big.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't generate enough power for that area anyhow, and I don't think you want to hold that over.
I actually have a question then, that brings up a question. Will your electric bill be more or less after you're finished with this?
I really don't know. I would say...
Okay. You're going from six...
Right now, we're going from five pump stations with smaller pumps to one station with larger pumps. However, nowadays, the pumps, the motors are so much more efficient than they were 20 and 30 years ago, so even the same, the same horsepower pump uses less amperage than the other pumps, than the old pumps. So is it going to be, I don't know if we're going to have a significant savings, anything, again, by sizing it properly though, the station will be one that we will have the pumps running on and off as frequently as they do now, so we'll not, all starts and stops and the banging on the voltage and so on.
Okay.
For clarification, this is just for the sewage out of the two buildings that are on the site, or there's no other water or anything else being...
Is it?
It's just being used for the sewage out of the Knoll East and West buildings, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the Knoll East and West currently have, I think they were all septic tanks. We're going to put new grease traps in for both of those facilities and then run gravity, abandon the old pump stations on the hill. Also, in the Knoll East, we found out that the existing pump station is under, I don't know if you've been there, we say they have a tank in the summertime? Well, the existing pump station is under the tank. So that means that we can only maintain it if they take the tent down in like November to March, or else you miss the boat and then you hope nothing goes wrong until the next time it goes through. So we're going to take that pump station out and we're going to change the plumbing of it, so instead of coming out on the south side of the building under the tent, we're going to come out on the other side. We work with the town farmer to make sure we know and know the new grease trapped there and flow by gravity down to the, where the new pump station is.
All right. Mr. Mendel?
You mentioned there was no standby generators currently.
Yes.
Will there be in the...
Yes, there will be, yeah. You know, we're going to get all the standards of the NJDEP regulations as far as pump stations go.
The natural gas or diesel?
It'll be diesel. We ran into this situation because the DE, or most even your building code, does not consider natural gas as an adequate standby for utility standby generator, because that utility could fail just as your electric utility could fail. So we have to go either dual fuel or diesel, and we're going to get diesel if we're able to.
Okay.
Yes. Can you hear me okay without the microphone?
I have a microphone.
Okay.
All right. Question for you, was stormwater runoff an issue when you had five pumps? And what have you done to mitigate against that now when you only have one pump? I mean, obviously a larger facility, but only one location.
Since we have a separate sanitary system in Parsonie, there should be no stormwater going into these pump stations. So therefore, we haven't had that experience where the roof on the Knoll West, let's say, is barely light. If their roof weed is sprained into the pump station, we would have noticed that a long time ago. So since it's a separate system, separate storm versus sanitary, we don't have that issue. I mean, sometimes we have is the infiltration issue where into the manholes and so on, but stormwater for most part is not an issue with this department.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Perelik?
Yeah, I know you said you have a budget for this. Did any part of this have to go through the town...
The, I look at, when we, I come up with these needs of the sewer utility, and I make the presentation to the mayor when he develops his budget. So the mayor agrees with me, the business manager's head agrees with me, and then presented to the municipal council. The municipal council, when they approve our budget, they, I feel they approve our project, which they did. However, now also what we have to do is, since it's a public project, once the plans and specs are finished and we get the permits from the NJDEP to construct, and we have, you know, approval for everything we need, we'll go off the public bid. At that point, the project will be presented, the contract will be presented to the, to the council as the low bidder to award the contract.
All right, thank you.
All right. Our town engineer, did you have any comments to add?
No, I looked over the, everything looked...
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions from the board at this time? All right. Do we need a motion on contingency reviews?
Courtesy.
Courtesy reviews, thank you. Did we need a motion on this, or do we just thank for his time? All right.
You can call in the next.
I move we thank him for the time.
So moved, right Steve?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
All right.
You're not going to make up the talk.
And at this point, we're moving to the minor committee, correct?
Okay.
We're moving to the minor committee.
We need to close this meeting and reopen as a minor committee? We don't have our...
Let our attorney tell us.
He's playing, helping the MC, I think, counter.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure they're standing in the right... Third pew and...
Yeah, I hear you.
Go back. You got, I don't have a needle, I don't know what happened. Is there a needle? I don't think there's a needle. You guys are going to have to sit further back from this.
Yeah, in fact, at least if they're walking.
Scott, question was raised, do we need to close the planning board meeting and reopen as the minor?
We do.
All right. Then I will accept the motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Mr. Fergieri, second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Hernandez, roll call?
Mr. Perelik.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes, all right. It's all yours, Mr. Dinsmore.
All right.
All right. You want to, are you going to slide over? Because I'm going to see if Mr. Dom...
I can spray. Yeah, might be better for you to...
Okay.
Dom, why don't you come sit up here?
Yep.
Want me to spray it down? I've been watching the monkey here. Oh, I'm fantastic. Spraying things down for no apparent reason.
You too, thank you so much.
All right. Take care, Dom. Good seeing you again tomorrow.
Thank you, John. See you at the top of the hill sometime.
Absolutely, stop by anytime.
He moves basically about a block and a half from me. When I want to do hill work, I walk up to his house. Okay, who are our members of our minor?
He's just, yeah, he can move on.
Yeah. Probably calling the order.
I'm just going to find out where Vince is going to go. Okay. Calling the minor subcommittee meeting to order. Announcement has made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6-Et Sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Perelik.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Did I get everyone? Did I skip anyone? Oh, except for our board planner, Ms. Vivate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
And board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Here.
All right.
You ready? Is this on, or do I need to turn it on?
It should be on.
It should be on.
Just talk into it. It's wireless, so you have to be close to it.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just a moment. Your application number 20:506, Minor Site Plan and Subdivision, Indian Stream 108120, Route 46, that's the case then?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight, obviously under unique circumstances, so we're going to do our best to try and give you the best presentation that we can. My name's Conrad O'Leary of the law firm Strasser and Associates, and we represent the applicant, Indian Stream LLC. We're here tonight in connection with its minor site plan application. This is a zoning compliant, non-variants application, and the applicant is going to be a tenant at the property, and he's looking to operate a grocery store at the site. So we're here tonight, we have our engineer is here to testify in connection with the site plan, we have our architect, who can answer any questions regarding the floor plan and any of the architectural upgrades at the property. We have the owner is also here, if we have any questions on operations. We also have the contractor, so I have a cast of characters. If you have any questions for anyone, we're ready to put them up, and I know there's other people waiting, so I will, you know, juggle those questions as they come. But as I said, we're here on this minor site plan application, it's variance-free. We believe that what we're proposing here is going to be clearly an upgrade to the existing site where it's currently vacant. We are upgrading the exterior of the property, obviously upgrading the interior of the property. We're making improvements to the handicap area on the outside, restriping the existing parking lot, and also providing a much-needed use to the community, which is this grocery store, especially in these times.
Just a moment, Counselors. Susan, do we need to go through complete list review on this?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief. Because there are no significant building changes proposed, and there are some, as the attorney mentioned, some facade changes, exterior changes, and interior as well. A lot of the typical checklist items don't really apply, for example, floor plans, spot elevations, they're not doing changes to utilities, drainage patterns. So we recommend waivers on the majority of those checklist items. We did ask for the 200-foot property on our list, just because it's a, it's a general checklist item.
I do have that, and I can provide that to the board, but yes, we had originally, you know, notice was not required to the public because it's a minor. We did notice the public, not for tonight, but the original meeting, which was back in, I think, the first week of April.
Okay.
So the public was noticed, even though it wasn't required to being a minor.
Correct, correct. And then the only other one that we recommended a waiver on was the environmental assessment form, there's not, not really any environmental features on the site, and we asked for testimony on tree impact.
Yeah, and we will have that. Gonzalo Trinowski, our engineer, will testify that. We also have the contractor here. There's really, hopefully going to be no impacted trees, there's really none in the site area that's going to be affected, but we'll have some testimony that can answer any questions with respect to that.
Great.
So as I said, we believe that, as I said...
Are you happy with all those things?
Yes, we, so, yeah, in some, this is a complete application.
Do I have a motion approving the waivers recommended by the planner?
A motion to approve the waivers recommended by the planner.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, sorry, does...
Now, we'll be fine, thank you.
Got to get the paperwork done.
Absolutely. So with that being said, I try and move it along as quickly as possible here for everyone. I'm going to first call our engineer, Gonzalo Trinowski of MSF Engineers and Surveyors. Gonzalo is going to walk everyone through the site plan, and he'll be able to answer any specific questions we have with respect to that.
That's included with our material, and you haven't modified it in any way?
No.
Then just identify it by how you identified it. You don't have to do anything, you know?
I'll just call this one C100. My name is Gonzalo, I'm with MFS Consulting Engineering.
Can you spell your last name? I'm sorry.
Sure. T-R-E-N-O-S-K-Y.
Thank you.
I'm going to be very brief, since we're doing very minimal site plan disturbance to the site. So essentially, we're just going to be restriping the property. Right now, a lot of the property is pretty much faded, so we're going to go ahead and restripe the entire property. We're not doing any kind of parking lot changes at all as far as removing parking stalls, we're keeping everything existing, 77 stalls, including four handicap spots. The major modification really is going to be occurring in the rear, we're going to be updating the garbage disposal area, basically putting some new fencing up, possibly replacing the concrete pad if it deemed it's necessary. One item to kind of discuss is the tree impact. Due to just the minimal impact of the site, like I said, it's just restriping, there really is going to be no disturbances to any trees, even if there were large, healthy trees in the area. The major disturbance is really, like I said, in the back area where we're fixing the garbage enclosure, and then there's a generator that's being added at the rear near the ramp that's there. And that generator is going to be essentially for emergency backup, for coolers, power goes out, it keeps the meat produce at a certain temperature, obviously. And essentially, that's pretty much the site works. No new utilities coming in, we're going to keep the existing gas, keep existing electric, sanitary, is not be in touch, so we're just going to conserve those features. And that's essentially any of the site improvements that we're occurring. So if anybody has any questions for that, please let me know.
Any questions from the board?
Are there going to be changes to signage on the property?
So the signage, Michael, which will be kind of showing the architectural plan, will show a little bit more about the building signage that's going up, but to answer your questions, no, we're not putting up new signage or new structures, that's what you mean, we're just kind of swapping up the old and the new. Go jump in until a little bit more in detail for you.
Will the building be sprinkled?
So the building is existing sprinkled right now, except a certain portion of it. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, I believe the warehouse is sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the warehouse is sprinkled, the majority of the building is sprinkled, so we're going to continue looking at that further as we progress with the design of the interior. Yeah, the applicant has agreed to fully sprinkle the building. My understanding is that the good majority of the building, which is the rear portion, is the newer aspect of the building, that is already sprinkled. The front part of the grocery store is not, but we will be doing that in terms of the construction. So at the end of the day, the building will be fully sprinkled.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman?
Actually, I was going to...
Does this require any review by the Fire Department?
The Fire Department? As far as egress/ingress with fire trucks into the site? We did not look into that, but if that's something that needs to be looked at, you know, pending conditional approval, we'll certainly look into it. Like I said, we're not really changing any of the existing layout of the site, we're kind of just keeping everything as is, flow and everything.
I believe the material was forwarded to the local District 6.
Correct, and they didn't issue any comments.
Okay, okay. My understanding was that we didn't receive any comments back from fire or police, so...
Okay, all right.
Other questions?
Sir, one of the photos of the trash enclosures looks like it's, I'm not sure which one it is, it looks like it's pretty dilapidated, the fencing. Would you be replacing that fencing or rehabbing it somehow?
Yes, so you're probably looking at a couple of pictures, there's an area at the rear of the property...
Well, there's a curving right in front of it, I guess that's the wall.
Yeah, it's, they look very bad shape, so that's why the client has agreed to fix it up, spruce it up, it's right now it's pretty dilapidated.
Thank you.
So yes.
Good.
There was also a question in one of the review letters regarding striping, of whether the entire lot would be restripped, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gonzalo, the entire lot will be restripped, not just around the building, but the entire lot. That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Vivate, do you have?
No, the only question we had was on signage, which I think is going to be addressed shortly.
Ms. Hernandez, and this...
I'm good.
Ms. Hernandez and Ms...
Good.
All right, I think we've questioned enough of this particular witness.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public here who wish to question this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call Mike Krawiec of SN Design Consulting, our architect.
Good evening. Regarding signage, my name is Michael Krawiec. It's spelled K-R-A-W-I-E-C. What we're proposing to do is to replicate the same parameters as the existing sign that's on the building and just change the name out to the client's name, Indian Stream, as opposed to the tile company that was there.
Could you speak up, please?
Speak up?
You can speak up, yes.
That was loud for me. Okay. We're proposing to use the same footprint of the design of the signage that is currently on the building, just changing the name, of course, to Indian Stream as opposed to the tile company that was there. And additionally, use the same existing sign that is out. I have it on mine. There's a sign sitting out in front of the building that is like a sandwich sign that has lighting on top that illuminates either side of the sign. Our preference would be to take that electricity and backlight the sign, so that's a request we'd like to make. If that's problematic, we'll maintain the same way the sign is now, which is to say that it has lights on the top and illuminating the surface of either side. Same square footage, just, of course, different names.
We can have the architect if the board would prefer. Mike can walk us through, you know, the exterior of the buildings. We have the elevations. If the board would like to see that, we can mark the plan as well as the interior floor plan. Mike, maybe if you want to start with the outside first?
Yeah.
And then you can move to the floor plan.
Since we're on signage, yes.
And that is a document you've already submitted that it's the same as what's already in our material?
That is correct.
And what document is that?
This is the elevations. It's A2.0. Thank you. The facade of the building remains essentially the same. As I mentioned, the signage area is the same square footage as previous. We, of course, are changing the name in there. What we've done is we've opened up the front corner of the facade and put in a new storefront approximately 16 feet wide by 11 feet high, so there'll be automatic doors for people, and that'll be the main entrance coming in and out of the building. Other than that, we put an additional door in the northeast corner of the building for additional egress. And then the rest of the building essentially remains the same. So the footprint remains the same, the exterior remains the same. The mullions are the same type of mullion that is existing, and the glass will match as well.
Mike, can you just point out on the elevations there to the board, the location of the sign?
And... Well, yep. This is the dark part. You may not be able to see it from your location, but that's essentially the same sign that's there now, same footprint of the sign. I believe it's 148 square feet approximately, and the town allows 150 square feet. Is that correct? So not much change. Anything else you'd like to see on the elevations? The front of the building is brick. The rear part of the building is a concrete block wall, beige in character with an accent stripe. The east and west sides are stucco on the front part of the building.
So this is also from our packet, and it is...
It is.
It is... What is the designation?
It is A1.0. And this is a plan of the layout of the building that illustrates new entry into the building, other egresses around the building here. This is a new egress that we're putting in the rear corner. Everything else is existing. Interior-wise, we're cleaning everything out and putting in new fixtures to facilitate the market. What we've done inside the building, there is a grade change between the front part of the building and the rear part of the building. Previously, there was a single man door with a couple stairs up and a platform. Currently, we're proposing to put in a ramp so to facilitate ADA and opening up one bay between the store, just to give a better visual look between the old warehouse area and the front of the store. The warehouse area is approximately 20 feet high, and the front part, I believe, is approximately 12 feet high.
Is the warehouse area going to be accessed by the public, or is that...
Yes, that will be open for shopping. There are freezers in the back. There's more of a private area of the warehouse where I guess they'll be prepping certain foods and, you know, just keeping excess stock.
I'm just asking so that our engineer can tell me that, yes, it's required that you have those ramps and things like that because you've got people going from one section to the other.
Right.
The construction coach will take care of the inside of the building.
Okay, good.
Right. Yeah, it'll be an ADA-compatible ramp, for sure, railings around, et cetera. So that essentially is the plan.
Mike, can you point out to the board the locations of where the sprinklers are currently now and where the new ones will be going in, just so they have an idea of that?
Currently, the warehouse area, the higher portion of the building is where the sprinklers are located. They're moving, we're adding additional sprinklers into the front portion of the building, which is the lower section of the building. They'll all obviously be code compliant.
The egress store that's being added, is that for emergency exit, or is that going to be used by the public?
It can be used for both. This is actually a private area, so it'll be for, you know, back of house. We have more than excessive amount of egress. The store is approximately 11,900 square feet in total, and we probably have, I don't know, seven egress. I didn't count because there are so many over one. Yeah, seven doors out, which is ample. We meet all of our travel distance requirements very easily. Use group maintains the same as it is currently, so there's no change in use.
Okay. Members of the board have questions on this witness?
Mr. Chairman, if I could. Can you just speak a little bit more on the sign question? Because you had mentioned that the freestanding sign that's in front of the building is currently lit from above, and you would like to backlight it? Is that correct?
That would be our preference.
When you say backlight, do you mean internally lit? I don't have the lighting portion of the code with me. I would say it's up to the board pending confirmation of...
I don't think we can necessarily approve that tonight, but if it's permitted by our ordinance, you can make a separate sign application after this.
Okay.
I seek to have that.
Yeah, I don't think...
And that should be over the counter if it's permitted.
I was going to say, this is Route 46. I don't know that there's any inconsistency with the rest of the...
Yeah, I don't...
Obviously, I don't have the sign ordinance in front of me either, but I am not aware on Route 46 that there is a...
I don't think so. It doesn't allow neon.
You should be able to simply follow zoning application, and if it's permitted, then...
Absolutely, and we do have the overhead, which is existing. So if it's not permitted, we're going to have the sign in the permitted area with the overhead lighting as it presently exists.
Yeah, you could just use what's there.
Absolutely.
If I don't include it, would you like me to read the section on top of that? Not really.
That answers that.
What you're saying...
We don't have a drawing in front of us. The board can't possibly approve something, so we don't have anything in front of us. We wouldn't know what it was, so...
Right.
What you're saying is that you will do whatever is consistent with our current law?
Absolutely.
But thank you for your offer.
This is the same essentially as Gonzalo's, so I think he's reviewed that. It's more about the parking and the refuge stalls that are on location. And we're just cleaning up the handicap areas. We're adding new signage to handicap areas, so they're all consistent with the code. And that would be it.
Okay, any...
And also with respect to the freestanding sign, just so it's clear, there are two signs, the one that's going to be on the building, and then there is the monument sign at the front of the property, and the intent, obviously, is just to remove the tile store sign and replace it with the new grocery store sign. So there's not going to be any change to that freestanding sign, nor any different lighting other than how it's presently lit.
You mean the building sign?
The building sign, I'm sorry. Okay, the board doesn't have any other questions?
Well, I just want to make sure, I got to say it for the record here, if there are any members of the public. I don't see any, but I got to give them an option to ask the question, and I don't see any, so... Counselor?
Thank you. If I don't have any other questions for the engineer, or the board doesn't, I do have my client here, who will be, who is the president of the company, will be running the grocery store. If you have any specific questions for him, he can answer on the operations end of it. We also have the contractor here. The board had any questions regarding construction, the tree issue, they're both available for testimony. I don't have any specific direct for them because there wasn't anything in the review letters that warranted their testimony. However, I thought it prudent to bring them along in case any of the board members had any questions for them. So they're available and happy to testify.
Ask if our professionals have any questions of them first.
No, good, thank you.
Have they, all right, have we have any members of the board or...
No questions.
Wish to ask any further? I think, you know, if there are any members of the public that have wished to speak in opposition, I hear none and see none. I guess, Mr. Carlson, we could go to a motion at this point.
Thank you.
Would I have a volunteer to frame a motion here?
Judy?
Judy?
I make a motion to accept application number 20:506, minor site plan and subdivision through the Indian Stream, 108-120, Route 46, Block 693, Lot 24.
Second.
If you recall the roll, please?
Mr. Raperwick?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, board. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Does anybody need a break, or we continue? Get back out in the air conditioning. Get back out in public air conditioning. Nora, is this plan designed so that if we did have significant public participation, that they would all be seated at the back table or something like that?
Large participation will call for a different venue. Not even a different venue, because that's not even easy to find these days, but it'll It'll be virtual. AtlantaDex is going to be virtual.
Really?
No, I'm just thinking that it would be good to have a debriefing, as it were, about this...
A debriefing, sorry.
A debriefing or going over how it went and stuff like that, where we could have done better. Little stuff, if I just think that way. All right now, we have application number 20:509, minor site plan and subdivision, CSC TKR LLC, 6 Eastman's Road, Block 738, Lots 3, minor site plan. You've got a microphone there, and...
There's another one on the table here.
Can I take the mask off to speak? Okay, if you can understand me, speak slowly. Hi, my name is Sean Monahan. I represent CSC TKR LLC. They're the owner and operator of the property at 6 Eastman's Road here in Parsippany, and we are here on a minor site plan application. I have with me Nadal Sumrin and Chris Thompson. Mr. Sumrin's with Bloom Energy. They are the vendor of the energy cell system that is proposed to be installed, and Mr. Thompson is with EBI Consulting. They're the engineers for the project.
Sorry, I got started, didn't see you were going.
I'm going to wear my mask, I've run five of my glasses.
I just put the glasses up on my head.
Part of the new kind of plans. The proposed project is the installation of a battery of energy cells. It's a new energy technology. It's not actually so new. We've been doing it for a while, and it is a supplement to the regular power grid. It's intended to be backup energy. You may know because CSC was here last year on a project involving their fossil fuel power generators, so this would provide an additional system, actually more sustainable source of energy and a more redundant, another source of energy in the event the other system wouldn't work, and as I said, perhaps a little more environmentally friendly source of energy. So we would have liked to have had the engineer who signed and sealed the plans here tonight, but he's in California, and with the COVID-19 restrictions on travel, we couldn't bring him out, quarantine him for two weeks, and have him up tonight. In fact, we found out about the in-person meeting about 10 days ago. So Mr. Sumrin is going to describe the proposed facility and answer any questions you have about its operations, and then Mr. Thompson, who is the engineer's supervisor, his boss, and does review the plans before they go out, will be here to answer any questions about the plans themselves. So if you don't have any questions for me, I'll call Mr. Sumrin.
Checklist first? Going to checklist?
Yes.
Absolutely, before we...
One moment, we're going to do the waivers first.
I'm not used to having checklists for minor site plans.
Well, it's short and sweet. We recommended waivers on most of the items because there are, as with the last application, no building changes. It's all external. So the only thing that we noted that was required is the property owner's list, which I don't know if you've submitted that yet, or...
I just gave the affidavit of service.
Got it, okay, very good. And then I think you had saw the waiver on the site photos, which is fine. We just asked for testimony about, you know, sort of the relationship with the overall site and the adjacent properties. So we recommend waivers on all the other items.
Thank you. Mr. Sumrin would probably be a good person to testify about the site conditions that would be shown by the site photos.
Can we move the waivers, or...
We haven't even declared minor.
Is it all going to be testimony?
It's technically not adhering, so...
Good evening.
Mr. Sumrin, would you state your name and spell your...
My name is Nadal Sumrin, N-E-D-A-L-S-U-M, as in Mary, R-E-I-N, as in Nancy.
And Mr. Sumrin, who's your employer?
Bloom Energy.
And what do you do for them?
I'm a project manager.
And briefly, tell your educational background.
I have a BS degree in mechanical engineering.
And are you familiar with the property at 6 Eastman's Road?
Yes.
Could you describe the property as if you were looking at it from the street and the relationship of the proposed cell, energy cells, to the surroundings and the impact, perhaps, of the property on either side?
Yep. So when you enter the property, to the gate, the building is pretty much to your left if you're facing the gate, and then all the way by the satellite tucked in the corner over there is where the proposed field... is where the proposed field cell location is going to be.
And it's also adjacent to the generator that provides power to the site?
It is near the gas tank that's by the satellite. The generators would be more towards the corner, near the building.
And the rear of the property is joint through 27, am I correct?
Correct.
Have you visited site?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the plans prepared by EBI Consulting for the project?
Yes.
Have you worked on other energy cell projects?
I have.
Can you describe the energy cell facility and how it would operate?
Sure, yeah. Pretty much, it's a standalone energy server that pretty much is monitored 24 hours in California and in India. Basically, there's a ton of sensors on these. And the main thing is for the client to have resilient power 24/7 without being involved in touching anything. So basically, if something were to happen, a valve goes, thermal couple goes, we would know about it before anyone else would. And we also have 24/7 field service specialists that are within the area. So pretty much, it's kind of a, you could compare it to your AC unit. Once it goes on, and your thermostat pretty much dictates when to go on and when to go off. It's pretty much the same thing, but it's shooting up electrons.
Will the project generate any significant additional traffic?
No.
Will the operations generate any noise that would be audible at the property line?
No.
Will the operations generate any odor that would be detectable at the property line?
No.
Will the operations generate any light that would be visible at the property line?
No.
Will the operations generate any vibrations that would be felt at the property?
No.
Will the project have any detrimental impact on the environment, adjacent properties, or the community?
No.
What's the benefit of the energy cell project?
Specifically, this one, it's a solid fuel oxide fuel cell, so it doesn't use any precious metals. It's a mix that uses beach silica and zirconium. So it does not use any precious metals that are environmentally harmful. In addition to that, it's not, there's no combustion going on. It's an electrochemical reaction. So everything that's happening with inside the fuel cells are pretty much chemistry. There's no combustion, so you don't have to worry about no NOx or SOx. And the only thing that it emits out is carbon, carbon dioxide. In addition to that, the sounds are very, very minimal. And the best thing about them, again, is that the whole goal behind it is for sustainability, renewable energy, being that we could run also hydrogen on them as well.
And you're the project manager for this particular project?
Yes, I am.
Will it be with it through completion?
Correct.
Okay. Will it be possible to keep the driveways to the property clear at all times during construction?
Absolutely.
Will it be possible to keep the construction dumpsters 15 feet away from the building at all times?
Absolutely.
Will there be any fencing around the area of the energy cell facility?
There'll be a temporary construction fence.
And now we go on at the end of the question.
Correct.
Are there any environmental constraints affecting the property, such as wetlands or steep slopes?
No.
One of the questions that we have gotten in connection with the submission was a question about a new water valve. Does the project require some source of water and a new water valve?
Yes.
Will the contractor be mindful of the locations of the depths of the sewer mains, platillos, queen outs, and connections in the completion of the water?
Yep.
Will care be taken to make sure that the queen outs are not baked over damaged or otherwise affected by construction?
Yes.
And those are all the questions I have for this issue.
We have... I do have a question about the easement that's shown on the plan. I had asked a question about the, there seems to be some plantings proposed above the easement that's there. What is the easement for, and will the plantings affect the easement at all?
And we were, we saw the comment, and we're expecting a condition of approval to be to consult with the forester to address the locations of those pipe exits, make sure there's no adverse impact. My understanding is drainage easement, but the area of disturbance will not interfere with drainage easement. And whatever adjustments to the landscaping, we're perfectly happy with it, to comply with the forester's recommendations.
That was my main comment. Okay. The members of the board have any questions, or...
What sort of safety measures will be taken to ensure the continued safe operation of these services?
On the fuel cells?
Yes.
So in terms of safety, there's a couple of different aspects to look at. One is electrical. And in there, we have a few disconnects and redundant PDS, which is another switch that we provide. So there's about three disconnects in place for the actual fuel cell. And then from the gas side, there's a set of redundant valves that are going into our module internally, where if in the event there is an issue, or let's say a trip, or something were to happen, all those valves will shut off.
Automatically.
Automatically. And there also, in addition to that, there is an EPO button, which someone could manually go up to, break the glass, and push the button, and it would shut the whole system down.
Other members of the board have any questions? Ms. Favate, do you have any?
Well, my question on the fencing was answered. And it's just the only other point I had was a minor discrepancy on the parking spaces, which I assume will be corrected in the compliance plans.
Yes, it will.
That's all I had.
Just one more question. Could you expand a little bit more on the water system, the water valve? I just, is it existing system that is being extended, being added or replaced? Or what exactly is going on there?
Sure. So the way it works is we usually tap off a three-quarter line, just a basic water line. And we have a WDM, which is basically a water desulfurization system. And what that does is basically, it purifies the water in order for the systems to reach up to temperature, in order to take the steam. And from that, we're able to do the chemical reaction. Now regarding the valve, it's internal to the WDM, and it automatically will be shut off if there's an event, an issue, or something like that. It will be shut off. When you go up for startup, it only uses about 0.8 gallons per minute. Once that's done, and we reach temperature, that is shut off, and there's no more water admitted to the...
Yeah, I was very curious how that was going to work.
Yeah, it's purely for the chemical reaction.
Thank you. That a satisfactory answer for you, okay.
Very minimal water, too, which is part of the environmentally friendly side of it. Continental power plants use a lot more water.
Okay. No other questions from the board or from our professionals? Any members of the public have any questions? Well, this witness, hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
That's all I have for you, Mr. Sumrin. And now I ask for your... Mr. Thompson, would you state your names and spell it for the record?
Chris Thompson, C-H-R-I-S-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N.
Who is your employer?
EBI Consulting.
And what do you do for them?
I'm director of engineering.
Do you have an engineering degree?
I do not.
Right, your degree is in finance.
That's correct.
However, you are the supervisor for engineers on this project, correct?
I am.
Have you testified in a site plan application here in New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Any in New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Do you know Anthony Barham?
I do, he works for me.
Okay, and what's your relationship to him, that you're his boss, right?
Yes.
And did Mr. Barham declare the plans that were submitted to the board in connection with this application?
Yes, he did.
Have you reviewed those plans?
I have.
Have you discussed those plans with Mr. Barham?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the property at 6 Eastman's Road?
Yes, I am.
Have you visited the site?
Yes, I did.
Are you aware of the proposed energy cell project for that site?
I am.
Are you prepared to discuss the plans with this board and answer questions about the plans?
Yes.
Will the construction of the energy cell project as depicted on the plans generate any additional stormwater runoff from the site?
No.
Will the project alter any stormwater drainage patterns at the site?
No.
Does the construction of an energy cell project as depicted on the plans require any additional parking at the site?
It does not.
Does the energy cell project as depicted on the plans generate any traffic on a day-to-day basis?
No.
I have no further questions for Mr. Thompson.
I have no question. The members of the board have questions. Ms. Favate, do you have any questions? Mr. Carlson? No questions?
None. Thank you very much. We have no further witnesses. We would ask the board to consider our application and if it is approved, vote approval.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have any either questions or comments at this time? I see and hear none. Do I have somebody willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman? A motion to approve application number 20:509 Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee, CSC TKR LLC, 6 Eastman's Road, Block 738, Lot 3.
All right. If you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Aperlich?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Yes.
And the result is the approval of the minor site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next case, we're going to have a whole new chairman.
Oh, is that what you were talking about?
Yep.
Oh.
This is the bank that I've been banking in since 1979, or at least the physical location of the bank that I've been in since 1979. I have had an account at JP Morgan Chase for a long, long time.
Okay.
Judy, you taking over?
Yeah. What, you want to?
So I am going to step down.
Okay.
I'm going to leave you. I'm glad we have three members here.
Judy, you did a great job once before.
It'll be great. Do you want the official...
No, I banged it too hard.
Okay. Let me bring cheese, and we can get the new applicants moved in. Thank you, be well, everyone, be happy, healthy.
Good night.
And if I start a little longer in front of her...
I can never do this.
So.
All right.
I haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah.
I've been running lately, so I don't like my house.
I just, I was hoping not to have to do the lawn every single week, but it's going to be hot enough to never rain, so I think that grass probably... And I get noticed that they took the lawn for a leisure town, the grass.
Members, you mean?
Yeah.
Four in total, so three makes the majority.
I need to move.
No, yeah.
We have a four-tray farm all along the back.
About the power?
Five days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of them has been lost here, and all of us have to walk.
Yeah, lose the refrigerator, no air conditioning. I almost...
Which my mother wants, we took a lot of food with us.
I always lose the power in a cold weather, so I'm not doing it.
We always lose the period.
Judy, can you call the application when you're ready?
Okay. I'm going to call the Minor Site Plan, application number 20:513 Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee, JP Morgan Chase, 53 North Beverick Road, Block 607, Lot 1.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Porter. I'm the attorney for the applicant JP Morgan Chase Bank. And I'm here tonight in connection with our application for minor site plan approval. Really, the scope of our approval before you this evening is for limited ADA improvements to the parking area to allow for handicapped accessible spaces to be incorporated into the existing site, as well as for sidewalk improvements. So I'm going to have our site engineer kind of walk you through the changes to the plan that are being proposed. There's no change overall with respect to the amount of parking that's provided on-site. We currently have 31 spaces, and will continue to have 31 spaces. So I'd like to introduce our site engineer. His name is Kevin Furayo with Core State.
Can I just interrupt for one minute? Is this where maybe this...
Yeah, but before we do that, Ms. Porter, first of all, it's nice to see you in real life.
Yes.
Secondly, we did have one member recue, so we have a three-member forum here.
Oh, that's right. Thank you for letting us know.
And we'll just go through the checklist really quickly. There were a number of waivers that we recommended because there are no actual building improvements, exterior or interior. It's all happening outside. You know, no changes to existing utilities, drainage patterns, lighting, et cetera. So we recommended a series of waivers, and we're happy with the application from a completeness standpoint.
Okay.
So I think you're looking for a motion to approve the waivers.
That's right. Do I have a motion to approve the recommended waivers?
Motion for...
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As you know, I don't do this all the time.
Our vice chair is...
Okay, continue, please.
Great. So next, I'd like to call our site engineer, Kevin Furayo from Core State.
Good evening, everyone. Like Jen said, the improvements are very minor. They're mostly focused on ADA improvements with...
I apologize. What's your last name, and can you speak more into the mic?
Sure. Last name is Kevin Furayo. My full name is Kevin Furayo, F-U-R-A-O. Sure. I'm a graduate from NJIT with a bachelor's in civil engineering and environmental engineering. I have six-plus years of experience. This is actually my first New Jersey board, but I've attested to other state boards.
Ms. Porter, we don't swear witnesses, that's mine.
Okay.
Here it goes, little block.
All right. Like I was saying before, the application is minor. We are mostly focused on ADA improvements due to that and the installation of a new sidewalk and the ramps to make it ADA compliant. We had to install to, or reinstall to retaining walls. Retaining walls being, I think, a majority of them are two foot and a half in height.
Please speak up.
Sure. The mask.
Yeah.
Other than that, the majority of the site is getting a mill and overlay for overall site maintenance. And all striping will be maintained in the exact same spot as it was existing at, except for the ADA spots, because they are being compliant in size and depth. And that is all. Any questions?
Okay. Susan, you?
Mr. Furayo, thank you. You answered the question on the retaining walls. I think you said they'd be up to two feet tall?
Yeah, I think the tallest one is where the actual ADA spots are. I don't know if you can tell, but because of the curb ramp, peril curb ramp, it's a flat surface ADA requirements. That's kind of where we had to make an actual retaining wall. If you walk through the site right now, it's kind of just a really stiff, steep-pitched landscape area. We also had to modify the inlet that's there, too, just slightly, just to make the retaining wall work constructability-wise.
And is there any impact on the existing landscaping of the bank?
They will have to take it out. There will be a site reduction in the landscaping because where it was mulch before, it is now going to be sidewalk and make the accessible path. But that is all that we anticipate.
So no loss of shrubs or trees on site?
Not that we're aware of. It should be just mulch we're taking out.
Will there be any impact to the drainage, existing, any changes?
No. We're tying in the grades and maintaining the existing drainage patterns.
So they're pretty much the new walls that were...
Yeah. It's so they can have the flat surface for the path where it wasn't, doesn't exist before.
So I noticed that there's improvements of the driveway. Do you think, or make sure that if you're going to be anything impacting the road, that you would coordinate that with town's engineering department?
Sure. It was mostly just, we saw at the site when we did the scoping that there was very, the pavement was a little more poor there in those areas. It's probably due to high traffic going in and out is more concentrated there.
Sure. If it ever expands to something that impacts the street, you have to get a permit for a street opening.
Yep, no problem.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair? Are you proposing to pave the parking line? It looks to be in pretty desperate shape.
It's not going to be a full depth replacement, just a mill and overlay, which is, they just scraped the first inch, inch and a half, and then they repaved the top course with a new layer.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, so are there any questions from the public? Seeing and I'm hearing none. So do I have a...
We do, we can do.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
Motion?
Yeah. I recommend approval of, uh, Block 607, Lot 1, B-5, Zone District, 53 North Beverick Road, for the applicant, JP Morgan Chase.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so Nora, you call the roll?
Mr. Perelik?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Now we have to adjourn, right? Or is there anything else?
So moved.
Okay.
We all want to get in our cars and rip our masks off. So what are we doing for our next meeting?
I think it's gonna have to be...
Is that what, is that what I'm gonna do?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to do a remote meeting, but...
First step in your meeting?
That's, that's what the thinking is now.
Yeah.
Subject changed until a few days before.
Right back.
Oh, not really. I only did it once before.
Yeah. Tell, and tell, tell her, tell her I'll, I'll be...